Welcome, everybody. All right, we're gonna gavel in this Borough Council Workshop and Regular Meeting for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll have our call to work.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Byrne.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Gerard.
Here.
Borough Manager Snyder. Your Borough Listener Harper.
Here.
Doesn't working. Technical error. User error.
All right, we'll stand do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we didn't arrange anyone to do our invocation. Would someone like to do our invocation?
I can do it.
As we gather today, let us take a moment to reflect on the importance of our collective efforts. We come together as representatives of our community, united and able to serve and improve the lives of our residents. May our discussions be guided by our wisdom, our decisions informed by compassion, and our actions driven by a shared vision for a brighter future. Let us try and include an inclusivity, respect, and collaboration as we work together to address the challenges and the various opportunities that lie ahead. In this being the productive, respectful, and beneficial to all members of our community.
Thank you, Councilman Gerard.
To Jesus' name, we ought to be.
Yeah.
I always have like a generic sample in my mind. Does anybody need one?
Okay.
Oh, it's pretty good on.
Yeah, that was great. It was very good on the fly.
I already have. They all have those things up.
Yeah, I have one in my mind.
Uh, I give you guys too much credit then, anyway. So, all right, we'll start with our agenda. Item one, approval of the meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the September seventeenth workshop and regular meeting?
Second?
I can motion Councilman Burns, second Councilwoman Weiss. Any questions, changes, or amendments? All in favor?
I'm in.
Opposed? There are none. Approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the August twentieth, twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five workshop and regular meeting? I can motion from Councilwoman Weiss, second Councilman Gerard. Any questions, changes, or amendments? If not, all in favor?
I'm in.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item three, public input. If there's someone here from the public who would like to make a statement or talk with us, please address the podium. Turn the button on, make sure the green light is working, and that's your name and address and the reason for addressing council. I'll take the fact that no one's jumping up to mean that there is no one that wants to address council. All right, we'll go to item four, announcements.
Next Borough Council meetings are the October first workshop meeting and the October fifteenth regular meeting at seven P M. in council chambers. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, at six P M. in council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, at eight A M. in council chambers. And the Hatfield Museum Historical Society is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, September twenty-third, at six P M. here in council chambers.
All right, any questions? Just for the public to know that we are starting our regular two-month meeting schedule again, starting in October with our workshop meeting and the first one in the month, and the regular meeting and second meeting in the month. All right. If there are no questions, we'll go on to item five, reports from standing committees and the mayor. We'll start with budget, finance, and labor. Budget, finance, and labor did meet today to talk through SEPTA, to also talk through the preliminary numbers, because we have started the budget season. So, nothing to report out, but the plan that we discussed was having a budget ready to present to council and the public here on the workshop meeting in November, so the first meeting in November. Any questions for budget, finance, and labor? All right, if not, we'll go on to planning, building, and zoning.
So, we did not meet this month, but we do have a couple of things on the agenda for council to look at today from previous weeks.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, I was just checking where that was in the discussion for later, so, all right. Any questions? I guess we'll really get to them later. How about Public Safety and Committee, Public Safety Committee report?
We haven't met, so there's nothing new to report.
All right. Public Works, property, and equipment?
Has not met since the last meeting, so there is no report.
Okay.
So, Jimmy and I are this next week gonna be going around to look at the parks, take a walk through the parks and get some ideas for that could be.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those changes and fixes you're gonna recommend will be at zero cost, right?
Actually, I think they're gonna make fun.
All right, I like that. So, when kids go on a ride, they have to put a quarter in before they climb on the aisle. Okay.
E-ticket, A-ticket seat.
Okay, yeah, just make sure to do it after the election.
That's right.
All right, how about utilities?
Uh, we have not met recently, although we're toward this time.
All right, Hurrock?
Hurrock has not met. Recently, we do have an upcoming meeting on Wednesday this come week at eight o'clock here in council chambers.
If there are no questions, we'll go on to Madam Mayor.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is the big one of our sixtieth anniversary celebration. I know it's mentioned in the packet, but I didn't want to bring everybody's attention from three to seven, so, but you can make it out there just for us. I also want to mention, Commissioner Siney received a letter from the Rescinding Commission consultant, and he feels the way things are going with the grants. The payments of the grants are delayed so it's ridiculous. I mean, two thousand and nineteen, the turnaround time on that grant was a hundred and thirty-eight days. Granted, for two thousand and twenty-two, the turnaround time was four hundred and thirty-five days. So, it just, it doesn't make sense why it's taking so long to get the grants paid. There is a number of changes that the E P. has made this year, and it seems like they're making it harder qualify for the grants. So, our consultant recommended that we reach out to our elected officials. So, I'm gonna put a letter together, and I'm also gonna check with other people on the mission. We have a meeting in three weeks and see what they're gonna take, but I guess I'm gonna throw this out, because council feel I will put a letter together stating our concerns, and we can send Representative Malagary as well as Senator Colette, say, you know, this is what situation is, and you know, see if they can do anything to mediate it. It's just ridiculous. It's taking so long to get a grant. So, is everybody okay with that, though?
Well, are there others that are gonna have similar?
Well, it shouldn't be everybody in mission.
Right.
There are eleven measures. Like I said, we meet in three weeks.
Okay.
So, I can talk at that meeting about, see what everybody wants to do, then perhaps our solicitor will come up with a letter that everybody can send.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay.
Before the meeting.
Okay.
But I just want, if nothing is decided at the meeting, should we send a letter? I think it's worthwhile to, to say this is the situation, not criticize them, but this is the situation, and they really shouldn't be taking us, you know, a couple of years to get the grants, so.
I assume that would be of coordination with the other groups that are there as well, too. That's why I was figuring that there'd be a coordinated letter, so.
Well, we'll see. We'll see what's divided at the meeting.
So, let me throw out two ideas you might want to look into before you write your letter, and I think it's a great idea to write your letter. One would be, it used to be that the receding grants had a designated revenue source. I thought it was tipping fees, tipping fees at landfills.
Yes.
Right, so that source of income should have come in regardless of whether or not the budget was done on time.
Right, oh, so, check on that, and if I'm right, that is the point you should make, okay?
And so, the money's there, and the second question is, are the grants delayed this year due to the budget? Or what?
Well, okay.
Because they haven't got the budget done yet either, and that was due two thousand and thirty, I think.
Okay, the grant from two thousand and twenty-one, it took them a hundred and forty-four days to do. Um, so, it just seems like two thousand and twenty-two is, you know, ridiculous, and they haven't even approved the application for two thousand and twenty-three. So, it's ridiculous, you know, that's what I mean. It just doesn't seem right.
Well, that's why I think if it has a designated source of revenue, maybe they have the money.
They do. It's the tipping fees.
Then they should send the tipping fees. Then they should have the money to pay it on time.
Right, one would think that, yeah.
Right, okay.
Sounds to me that it doesn't seem to be a top priority for our effective officials. Harris Rock.
Well, actually, that's what we need to know.
It's not necessarily the elected officials, and that's what we need to do, bringing some more attention. And, okay, I'm a.
Sounds like a good idea.
I'll just try to report it.
Okay, all right. Councilman Burns wanted to talk through the two hundred and fifty-year celebration, so.
Sure, quick, the committee's just giving updates.
Yeah.
Yep, so, this Saturday, September sixth, I attended the dedication ceremony for the roadside plaque commemorating Jacob Reed. For people that might not know where it's at, it's down Penn Avenue, down on the left when you hit the first curve, and it's one of those road sites times. All of our elected officials were there, township, borough officials, people. It was a very nice ceremony. Some of the living relatives of Jacob Reed were there, so that was kind of interesting. It was pretty neat. I also want to recognize that at the ceremony, one of our own, Larry Stevens, was recognized for all of his efforts working with the township on the Celebrate Two Fifty Ceremony. You got a nice certificate and a medal you got, so that was excellent, so congratulations. But there's, there's a bunch of events that are planned for this next year. There's two that are coming up. That's why I wanted to bring it up here, so people would know. There is one in September, and it is September thirtieth at seven thirty P M. at the Township Building, and it's a little-known facts about the American Revolution. There's a speaker. The presentation will discuss some of the little-known facts of the American Revolution. It will range from learning where and by whom the first blood was shed in the conflict to the problems in getting the Treaty of Paris ratified. In between, we'll learn of all those writing to warn others besides Paul Revere. We will also find out who were those Hessians. Signers of the Declaration will be identified for their interesting quips and unfortunate suffering. And let's not forget the ladies and helpers from abroad. The presenter is John Evan Wright, Ryder, I think is how you say it. He was a graduate of the University of Wisconsin, Whitewater. He spent forty-seven years in the accounting field, mainly with two Fortune five-hundred companies. He serves as a brandy wine battlefield tour guide, so he knows his stuff. He was, he has authored a historical novel titled By George, Blazing a New Nation, The U.S. War of Independence. So, that is September thirtieth at seven thirty P M. at the Township Building. And the second one is in October, October twenty-ninth, at seven P M. once again at the Township Building. And it's the Birth of the Nation Through the Eyes of Five Prominent, and this would be in our area, Pennsylvania and the East. Through the Eyes of Five Prominent Colonial American Artists, Benjamin West, John Singleton Copley, Charles Wilson Peel, John Trumbull, and Gilbert Stewart. The lecture is by James D. Pagliero. He's an attorney and art historian, and he'll be discussing some of the paintings and things that commemorate the founding of the United States and the famous founders during battle scenes and seminal moments. So, those are upcoming events. There are other events throughout the year. Here at the Borough, we have the brochures and things out there, so pick one up and look, and each month, if there's things coming up, we'll be sure to get it posted. And look on our website, too.
I had an idea that you can take now, but I think it's great you brought this up. Would you mind if we added it as a monthly report under reports and correspondence, and then you can be like the liaison for the two fifty, and then you, because I did think when you were talking about, there is a lot of events and we're less than a year away.
Yeah.
I didn't really think about that, but we are less than a year away.
Forgot me doing this was, when I was at the thing out there.
Okay, so you're okay if I do that, add a two fifty, and then you'll give a monthly report? Okay, thank you. And Kate said about getting them onto our calendars and stuff, so I made a note of that, too, and we talked about we're part of the Valley Forge Tourism, and that's something that we can post on theirs, too, so we'll take care of that since there's something in September.
And for everybody that doesn't know, we're actually partnered with the township, so it's called Hatfield Two Fifty, and this is the, what the brochure is and the logo and all, so. Okay? Thank you.
All right, any questions?
Real quick, I want to add to a big thank you to Lindsay and Borough staff and the works for Great Car Show and Ball Fest.
Yes.
Very successful.
Anything else? All right. If not, we'll go on to item six, our reports and correspondence, and we'll start with the monthly investment.
The monthly cash accounts and investment report was included in your packets. Did just want to highlight, if you look at the first page for Hatfield Borough Total Income and Disbursements, um, sorry, it's the second page after the cash accounts. We do collectively have some fees that we pay to Key Bank. You know, roughly right now, we're up to ten thousand dollars a year that we pay for them to manage our accounts, so that's something that Budget, Finance, and Labor is gonna be looking at for our investments moving forward, and, you know, we do get disbursements back, you know, but that obviously comes off the top of those disbursements that we're making to, you know, our investment accounts. So, is two million dollars something we can manage in-house? Is two million dollars something we can do? You know, these are conversations we are gonna be having this year through the budget process, so I think there's probably gonna be some changes or suggested changes for council to consider for two thousand and twenty-six, to try to save some funds. And in the investment tracking through July, just when you look at the last column, I was speaking to the mayor earlier this week. There is some red in there, like a difference was five hundred and sixty-five thousand, ninety-nine dollars. You know, when you have like T-bonds built, you're, you should never be negative, like you'll never lose money on those. What you purchase them for is what you will get them back at. Um, so Diane and I did some numbers and looked at the accounts. It's actually thirteen dollars, but it's still, it's the next page, P. At the very end. In case they want to say, keep going, that. Five sixty-five ninety-nine at the top. We did look at the numbers that were coming in, and it's actually thirteen dollars, but it's still negative, which should not be happening. Don't know why it's reporting that way, so we have a call into our advisor at Key Bank about it. When I got the new ones this month in August, everything was fine, and it wasn't even on there, so I don't know if it was just an error in their system or whatever, but Diane and I had a conversation that, you know, we should never have any red on this piece of paper, so I was glad we talked about it this week, and we'll figure that out and get a more definitive answer moving forward, why that was reported that way.
All right, any questions? All right, monthly E I T. L S T.
E I T. and L S T. were in your packets. If we focus on E I T., year-to-date through August, you can see that in two thousand and twenty-five, we're one oh one, two ninety-nine. First, in two thousand and twenty-four, we were ninety-three, one forty-one, so looking positive for E I T. I do believe we bumped that a little bit in the projected budget. Budget, Finance, and Labor will obviously look at those numbers along with council for a little bit of a revenue increase. When we're moving on to the L S T. in August, year-to-date, we're at thirty-eight, seven eighteen. First, two thousand and twenty-four, we were at forty-eight, six seventy-seven, so we'll just have to keep an eye on that. It kind of looks like we had good years, good months in November, so maybe November will bring some good revenue in. It looks like that happened in two thousand and twenty-four. So, we'll just continue to keep an eye on that. It's roughly, I think we've budgeted roughly forty-five thousand this year, so we'll see if we get there.
All right, any questions? Monthly year-to-date?
Monthly year-to-date's in your packets. You can see revenues versus expenses. Uh, similar, I like when our revenues are higher than our expenses, which the overall is great. Unfortunately, in July, we did have three K B C. payments for the utility replacement project that kind of put us over the humble a little bit, but, you know, looks good overall.
And I meant to ask, where are the August ones?
She only did dozen through July, so she does what she has done, so we don't get the August. We got in like the beginning of September, so she does, she'll have that for, she's she basically like, in a sense, if you look at it, it's always like a month and a half, essentially two months behind, yes.
Yeah, I always thought it was a month. I didn't realize it was, okay, all right. All right, any questions? All right, how about the monthly zoning hearing board?
There was no applications, though we do have a conversation about a conditional use, which goes to council later in the meeting.
Yes. All right, monthly, excuse me, the Montgomery County Planning Commission?
This committee has not met through the summer. We will be meeting next, next week to kick off, you know, back our meetings in the fall and winter.
But our police department?
I'd like to do a report with the board to see them.
I think we should make Chris get up and speak to everyone, actually.
I don't think you want that.
Oh, that's a good question, so. Councilman Byrne?
Yeah, how's the building coming along?
Pretty good. Apparently, they just started planting some of the landscaping in the potential basins and started to get rid of the property there. A lot of work going on inside. There's a forty-film mile with wiring that they've been putting in, so it's a pretty impressive place coming along.
Is it dry, drywall in there now?
Drywall paint, they start piling epoxy floor coatings on certain areas where they needed some fixture, plumbing fixtures starting to go in, so fire suppression system, all that fun stuff.
We are hoping to schedule a tour at the end of the month with the chief. We're just finalizing the date.
Good.
We're still on track for the open?
As of right now, it seems that we're on track.
Yes, well, as I say, I didn't realize the interior work was that far along, which means, yeah, you're pretty far along, so.
Yeah, you still look at, there's still quite a bit to do on the outside as well, for still some fair amount of concrete where to go. Trim work and stuff like that, and finish Thanksgiving.
Any questions? If not, we'll go on to the fire department report?
Three sixty-one for the year. Forty-five of those are in the borough. And we're on pace to hit about five fifteen by the end of the year.
And remind us, what was that percent increase?
About fifteen, twenty.
Fifteen, that's okay.
More than one a day. Wait.
They were about forty-five a month. Then we should have our new squad probably within the week.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll go on to the M S.
Those are only must-report in packets.
Should I say something?
The themes report, I skipped that one. I'll read the themes.
All right, how about Public Works?
Uh, nothing further to add to the packet that I've already submitted, other than the two thousand and twenty-five million overlay that was completed. If anybody's seen, North Main Street is nice and smooth finally. Uh, even West Broad Street behind Vinnie's Pizza between, what I say, Route four sixty-three and Talmenson Avenue is finally, after decades, a nice road again. The budget number that we had budgeted for this job was a little over a hundred and three thousand dollars. The bid results came back at right around seventy-six thousand, and it's looking like the total cost is gonna be just under seventy-three thousand. So, all good news, all good numbers.
Yep, yeah.
All good news now.
Yes.
How's the public response been?
We haven't heard complaints, so.
It's a good sign.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Steve? All right, if not, we'll go on to our engineering report?
Chad's report was included in your packets. I'll highlight some projects and land development. So, the utility replacement project's been completed, and final payments were made to the contractor in August. As you know, they were approved. Uh, and grant reimbursements over five hundred thousand dollars have been received. We're currently waiting for remaining grant funds over two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We put in the applications. We're waiting for those to come back to us along with our final payment from North Penn Water Authority, because a couple of payments, some of their work was included. Our agreement was we would pay, and they would reimburse us. So, we're hoping to have a significant payment in October to pay off our debt, so hopefully that will lower the debt projection that we have in the current budget in two thousand and twenty-six, so we're looking forward to that. Um, have heard all good things about the contractor and how that project went. I don't have any complaints. I haven't heard any complaints, so that was a positive project for the borough. Uh, if you've noticed, the Hatfield Walk Development, that's off of North Main Street, the site building into construction is ongoing, and at the end of August, our engineer was out to just check on E N S. controls, and they were satisfactory, so that keeps progressing. Right now, he's doing the foundation work for that property, and then is really hoping in his plan to get it under roof by the end of, like, December. You know, sometime over the winter time, be under roof and working inside. And Forty-three Roosevelt, site improvements are ongoing there. They were doing some of the lots and doing some utility work. And on August twenty-eighth, again, Chad was out, and he did check their property for E N S. controls, and I, everything was satisfactory, so that project is moving along, too. That's the two sets of twins that's out on Roosevelt Avenue. So, there's no, nothing else really to highlight in Chad's report, unless there's any specific questions.
I did, just a question.
Yeah.
Edinburgh Square, we're still squaring up on some details there.
Yeah, he put in an escrow request. I want to say, maybe it was like June, that he put in an escrow request. Chad went out and said that they had to do some work in the basin and clean out some inlets, and it was better for that developer to do the basin work in the fall than over the summer and risk that it could die, or, you know, some plantings. So, he's gonna do that in the fall, and Chad will go back out and check, and then we can release their final escrow.
Okay. Because we're still on the list, so.
Yeah.
Any questions for Jamie? Okay. All right, how about zoning officer, building code, and property maintenance report?
So, the reports from C I I. are in your packets for July and August this month. If you notice, in July, just highlighting that sixty, or sorry, twenty-six door hangers for notice of violations for high grass went out, along with some other really property maintenance violations, along with, if we're moving into August, he had thirteen door hangers for notice of violations. Also, property maintenance outside of the feral feeding of cats. I had a meeting with the code department this week about property maintenance in Hatfield Borough, and that that is, I was very honest, and said it's the number one complaint that we get in Hatfield Borough for property maintenance. Had driven around town and created a list, an Excel sheet, and was provided to that department, so we will be doing what he is referring to as a property maintenance blitz, if you want to call it that, in Hatfield Borough over the next several weeks. Really trying to focus on getting the properties up to code with what our ordinances say. It's not that we're imposing something that's not a code or a law by Hatfield Borough, but we really just need to, you know, be a little bit tighter on property maintenance, especially because that's what we do receive the most complaints about from residents and business owners. So, he will be taking that initiative over the next several weeks. So he will be taking that initiative over the next several weeks.
Any questions? All right, fire marshal and safety, fire safety inspection?
Fire safety inspection report uh just shows uh year to date, you know, fifty percent of the properties inspected have passed. Uh, the total inspection is only sixty-two percent of all properties in the borough, so I, I hope, I was hoping that would be a little bit higher, to be honest. Um, so I will follow up with Bob on that uh when I see him tomorrow. Just how are we gonna get closer to that hundred percent mark when we're already in two September? What's his plan? Do I need to, do we need to talk about him having more hours here? What does that look like for our budget? So I wanna talk to him and kind of get a better game plan for the next several months.
Any questions? Pool advisor?
There was no pool advisory report in your packets.
The uh pool's now closed. They have, they have the dog-a-palooza, right?
Yeah, I saw that on, uh, that they, the dogs swimming.
Yeah, yeah. But everything was good. I didn't hear anything from the, the, the folks that run it about any issues this year, so.
No, we saw one of them at uh Fall Fest. Steve and I were talking to him and um said that, you know, for what a pool is, it was successful. You know, they're not, you think they're a big moneymaker, they're not a big moneymaker. Um, successful, you know, of course, you run into young kids and staffing issues a little bit, but very successful season and um they're looking forward to next year.
Any questions on our reports and correspondence? If not, we'll go on to the manager's report?
My report was included in your packets and outlines, you know, very similar to what Chad does in his report for the land development use. The only thing I wanted to highlight on was a P M E A update as uh Steve and I attended the P M E A conference um out in Bedford this year. It was a lot. We did talk about capacity and energy costs, you know, the, but a, a lot of it was focused on, you know, A I and how that could maybe help your utility, you know, advances, you know, in the electric systems, those type of things was a big focus. And I wanted to highlight that um I did submit on Hatfield Borough's re- uh behalf um to retain our board seat. And we were uh elected anonymously to serve uh on the P M E A board. So uh we will continue to represent P M E A on the uh board and the executive committee.
Any questions? All right, if not, we'll go on to item eight, new business and discussion items. The first one is the Grace Lutheran Church Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Request.
Grace Lutheran had sent in uh an email to myself requesting um to be able to hold their annual Christmas tree lighting event on Saturday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, at Railroad Plaza. Although Mr. Kunkel didn't highlight in his email when we had met in person, he met with Steve and I in person. They did highlight that Grace would love to host uh crafts and, you know, some food before the event. Walk down to uh Railroad Plaza, Memorial Park, um sing carols, Santa comes, the same things that we have done in the past. Uh, we did offer, um, cause they were having some issues with craft time. Lindsay did offer the borough's assistance and said, we'd be happy to host the crafts. We'd be happy to do the crafts for you. Um, and they said that would actually be a really big help. Um, and we said, all right, so I think we'll try to work something out with them where we can help them along with like the craft time. Uh, and you know, they'll be running some games and stuff, so we'll see how that works out for this year.
Manager's lighting, have they had a replacement from Mr. Robby yet?
No, so uh currently how uh the synod works in like the Lutheran congregation is they have a bridge pastor right now, Pastor Littleton. Uh, she will serve until October twelfth. And then when she leaves, uh, they will have an interim pastor that they um will appoint. And I believe that the church council met last night and they decided if that was the way they wanted to go, they'll have an interim pastor. That interim pastor could serve for six months. It could serve for three years. It depends. Uh, and at that time, they'll work through the call process with the synod to take resumes and experiences. I believe um some congregations have been struggling just with the people going to seminary and stuff. So it could be a while, but that's where they're at in the process.
And based on the number of uh kids and adults that do the crafting, will they need any support from our public works to block off streets or to, you know, guide people from the church down into the Christmas tree lighting? Is there, I don't know, I don't know how many people participate in it, do, will they need our support?
I believe that our public works stays down at the event, sets up the stage to drive Santa. And in the past, they have had, um, the police department works with crossing, so I know that they will be involved. And they had the Boy Scouts kind of like lead the way before. And so I will check with Mr. Kunkel to see if that's kind of what they're still planning to have that. And when the Boy Scouts led the way, I think one of the masters kind of stood and let everybody cross. And you know, when we were at Maine and then when we got to uh Broad and Lincoln, that um the police helped them cross.
Okay.
Yeah, but I will be happy to check with them if they need any support from our public works department.
No, it sounds like they already got it taken care of for those folks, so.
Okay. And it's on for consideration as an action item this evening.
All right, any question? If not, we'll go to item B, the junior council person candidate.
I would like to go to our meeting here tonight, uh, Giuseppe Chiano, who is a senior at North Penn High School, and he is um would like to be appointed as our new junior council person. Um, I introduce the next people have, I introduce him to some council members, but very quickly, I'm gonna just go around, um, Solicitor Harper, Manager Snyder, Councilperson Weiss, Councilperson Fagan, President Ferguson, Councilperson Burns, and Vice President Gerard. We also have, I maybe met Katie, um, and um Steve, who is the director of other works. Now, um, I hope everybody read um his letter, so I'm gonna invite him up to the podium and uh he can field your questions.
To make sure it's on the green light should be on. All right.
Yeah, um, I hope, if you read his letter, there's a lot in there. I kind of tried to highlight everything briefly for you. Um, not much to worry to make other than what's in the letter, but I'd be happy to see any questions.
Well, uh, I sent you that guidelines, yes. Um, do you think you might have any problems? Um, like attending the meetings, uh, you seem very busy. Will there be an issue with your attending a meeting some?
Yeah, so far I don't see any issue with that, you know. Um, we, we talked about meetings on our Wednesdays for general council. And then looking ahead, uh, I think I looked at tonight's agenda and one of the mission, the planning mission meeting, which I was interested in attending, so on Sunday night. I don't have anything on that, just those guys. I don't think that any of that would be an issue. It's that this is a great opportunity. So I would try to prioritize this.
Yeah, a good question for you. Um, you know, first of all, welcome and, you know, we, we hope you're on a journey. Be serious, but um can you give me an idea what you are looking to get out of this for yourself personally?
Yeah, so one of the things that I highlighted in my letters that I currently uh work with, state representative Thomas Scher, and I get a look at how uh state government works. So having this opportunity to be a junior council person will kind of give me more of a lay out on how local government works. Because as we own a local government, it's mostly important kind of all three. Uh, you know, it asks every day like, so absolutely, it may, you know, it asks view of, of what local government does for everybody.
Thank you.
So I just said a couple of things. First of all, uh, excellent goals in here. When I read that paragraph, I thought, you know, we, that would be something that we would use to write the job descriptions on. That's excellent. Uh, I was impressed with your understanding of the lack of understanding by the public about exactly what we do. So that's very exciting to me. Uh, one key to this, to this whole thing, and uh not just for this, but for everything is communication. So, you know, that's the one thing, if you keep that in mind as you're working through these things, because you do have a lot, you know, and a lot of different things that are in different places, which might be difficult. Communication, uh, you know, uh, Mayor Gerard would be your contact and you're constantly communicating. That'll help you with your understanding of it too as well. And uh if, if you don't get anything else out of that, I think that's the key. It's in life, in jobs, in what we do here, everything. It's all about communication. So just keep your channels open and be mindful of that, and I think you'll be fine. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
How long have you been involved with uh four H?
I've been working out at nine.
Nice.
And yeah, I'm alive.
And what kind of activities?
So I've been in Southern Club, Air Rifle Club, and Public Speaking Club.
Great, that'll be helpful.
Very helpful.
Wait, which one? The air rifle?
No.
Now, I didn't mention this, but he's running for judge of elections in um general election in November. So I think that's quite, um, quite an accomplishment.
And you live in the township?
I live in township, so I'm in Forte.
Okay.
So what are you passionate about, Ed?
Passion, yeah. Making a change is my number one thing. But um a lot of the people that are my age, whenever I talk to them and I say, hey, you know, I'm interested in politics, they ask why? Because oftentimes, not a lot of people think about it, but uh I always tell people like, I wanna make a change. And most of the time, the only way to make a change is through local ordinances or state laws or federal laws. So that's what I think. I think that if in the future I see myself getting into politics, getting into the local government or state government, I see myself making a change for better, whatever that is, I don't know yet. But I think that making changes is the biggest thing we do.
So your, your thought is you want, you're more of a change agent or an agent of change to? What's one thing you'd want to change if you had, if you had ultimate power, do whatever you want? What would that be?
Oh my gosh, that's a really big question. I don't know. There, there's.
Uh, it's a good question.
It's a great question. Uh, there's, there's, there's all different things. I mean, that would be a bigger, I'd have to take proper.
Okay, okay. Nothing wrong with that, nothing wrong with that, so. Sorry, Steve, you probably didn't hear, he was chastising me, so. For asking the question. Oh, okay.
Just thinking public speaking's great.
Yeah, he's, he's very articulate, so, very articulate, so.
Okay, oh, I mean, thank you very much for coming in today.
Yeah.
And um we will get back to you very shortly.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll go on to item C, ordinance number five five nine, amending chapter five, Code of Ordinance for Residential and Non-Residential Property Inspection Program. Madam Stacey?
Okay. Uh, I just said we could vote. Yes, so really, you know, last year we uh adopted the rental inspection program in Hatfield Borough. Uh, it's been going on since January and the committee has had some feedback throughout several months. Um, basically trying to distinguish the difference between the residential inspection, rental inspection program, and the fire safety inspection program. Um, some people were saying, well, I already get property inspections. And it was really trying to define that they are two separate programs, but they still check for very similar things. So it still checks for your codes and your, you know, fire and that. So this, these updates are basically just to define that, that there are two separate programs. One is for residential pro- uh rental inspections, which would be all your multifamilies, single-family homes, twins. And then fire safety stills allow the borough to go in and, and inspect commercial properties, institutional properties, industrial properties. They are two separate programs which collect two different, separate revenues, and there's two different um registration processes for both. Uh, this ordinance also kind of made it a little bit more clear what they will be checking. And kind of outlined that everything in highlighted in yellow, you know, common spaces, like what this includes, outdoor spaces, what that includes, just to clean it up a little bit. So it cleans it up, um, kind of puts everything in front of you. You don't have to assume anymore that they're gonna inspect for X but not Y. It's clearly listed out and then separates the two programs. So those were the major changes. Nothing else really changed outside of that.
Right, I, I looked it over, I looked the draft over and put it in order in terms of the way the ordinance already, already reads, so the numbers follow through the way they're supposed to. But other than that, I think the other thing this does is really lays out more safety standards for the residential inspections. Says exactly what inspector's gonna be looking for and looking at. And I think that's, that's helpful. Cause it, it directs the inspector what to do and it tells landlords what they have to be aware of. Right.
I think the committee is looking for this to be advertised to hold a public meeting at the October fifteenth regular meeting. So we're hoping that you look at this, um, have any questions, you think something, hey, you didn't catch this? Or I rent and I wish this was on there or whatever, come back and we'll talk about it again October first. You know, you can always make changes, but we would like to hold a public meeting uh for this on October fifteenth at the regular meeting.
No, I just wanna commend the committee for, for the work done on that, because uh, you know, I know we just, we just put it in place last year, but it's a great job to catch all of that and all that detail. So I think it provides clarity, uh, and I just want to say good job for everyone to work on. So, any questions? If not, we'll go to D, ordinance number five sixty, amending chapter ten, Code of Ordinances, weeds and other vegetation to regulate and to regulate bamboo. Madam Sussler?
This one basically adds bamboo, um, not growing bamboo and um keeping it far from things. The list of, of, of uh nuisance vegetation, I guess, around the borough. The problem with bamboo is it's very hard to get rid of once you have it. And it spreads like crazy underground. And then pops up and you, you take it down and then it comes back next year and it's a problem. So it's actually better if people don't have it. And we allow it, but we, you have to be like forty feet from our property line. So in the borough, that's gonna keep most of the bamboo out. People like to have bamboo for several years now. People like to have bamboo. Because it does create a really nice dense screen. Problem is, it doesn't stop there. So that's the problem. So we're trying to make that illegal, basically.
So does the way it reads now, is it? Is it only within, you know, uh, outside of the forty-foot edge because, or it says shall be prohibited within the borough. And then lower, it goes into the forty foot, so I just want it to be clear whether it's allowed at all or um, cause it looks like it reads both ways under section D.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we should probably pick one or the other.
What do you want? Not at all? Cause I think, I think you're right. I think before we advertise it, we should, we should fix that.
I mean.
And say what, which way it is.
I would think not at all, but I don't, I don't know. Does anybody else feel any differently? Yeah, how many properties, you know, will be able to plant it without being forty feet within the borders? I don't know. If, if the goal is to not have bamboo, I think we should just say that.
It's a rest of our council field. We, we can fix that before we advertise.
I think it's just taking out to. Yeah, I think it's just easier to enforce and it's clearer and.
What do we do about the, the places that have it now, the? Do they have to take it out?
Well, problem is, if you have it now, this ordinance is not clear whether you can keep it or not. Upon the effective date of this chapter, it's prohibited.
Yeah, I would think they, they'd be able to keep it then, right?
Right, there are ordinances uh in the county, I've seen them, where they make you take it out. So that, that can be a problem. And what happens is one neighbor reports on another. My neighbor's bamboo is killing me.
It may be a good idea to put something on there like, uh, you know, that's what the, that defines this ordinance should have six months to remove any existing plantings of that type.
Why don't I add a clause to that effect, right?
Um.
And we could also make it illegal to maintain it, in other words, to keep it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's areas like, is this bamboo out here?
Yeah, I was like, we, we would have to make us, we would have to take responsibility for that.
That's okay, and then there's a lot of. That's what I'm thinking. And there's a lot of places where it's at that the person may not have put it there, you know, I mean, and then we're going to require them to. Cause that's costly.
It is costly. Let me say this, a couple of ways to do it.
Yeah.
You can cut it at the bottom level and then make sure it doesn't get any sun. So there's no photosynthesis.
Right.
Okay. Or, and this is what's recommended by professionals. You dig down, you dig it out. That's expensive.
That's expensive.
So what do you want to do?
The, the only complicate, I see a complication if we say as effective this date. So anyone else who has it today will be grandfathered in. How do you determine who's grandfathered in and who wasn't? Right? That's going to be an endless debate.
Well, if you put in the section that says, uh, six months after the effective date, you are required to remove the bamboo and make sure it does not spread.
No, no, I'm saying that.
That's an expense.
No, no, but I'm just saying that if, if we keep it where we say you, it's only effective after this date that you can't put it in. Anything that was already in place beforehand, how do we determine was it in place before the effective date or not? And so that I think that would have some endless debate. So.
And you also get into the thing like you said. If you yank it out, those roots are underneath there. You didn't get the roots. They can pop up, you know, it'll pop and it may not pop up here. It'll pop up down there in somebody's yard, you know?
But I think there is a way to prevent that academy. But I think they, like if you cut the thing down to the ground level, there's a herbicide, I think you'd be able to put on that to kill roots.
Right. Well, I, I don't know that has worked. I, I actually had a case involving bamboo, so I learned a lot about it. Okay. One thing that does work and the Penn State recommends, you know, the extension service, they recommend you cut it off at ground level and then you cover it over with something like, you know, people put those sheets in there.
Right, something black prevents the sun from.
To keep the sun from getting, eventually the roots will die.
I think the herbicide is quicker method and you don't have to be covered.
And it's a lot cheaper than getting somebody to pull it out.
Inject it into the, the, you know, whatever the stump is there of that, but.
So let me suggest that we put in that it has to be removed within a year.
Before we do that, maybe we should know how much of this is in the borough.
Yeah.
And where's it at? You know what I mean? I mean, how do we, you know, do we have Bob go around and, or he's going around look?
Look at it and then he's going to have to send letters to people.
We have no idea.
Say you have a year to get rid of it. We just made it illegal.
Yeah.
And the first thing I do is get rid of it at the, on the borough property. Just say.
We'll have to see what the EP says digging in a creek. So.
That's the other problem.
Right, right.
Start running flame follows.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah. I think Bob can, we can do something to be proactive to try to figure out who has it. I can't say we can do a catchall of everyone, but I do.
Get a good idea.
We can do a good idea. I think that's a, a great way to at least have some data behind it.
Right. And then I would also, like I said, I'd give him more than six months.
Yeah, we should do that before we move forward, I think.
Yeah, I can talk to, uh, I'll write it down.
See how much we have.
Exactly.
If you want to authorize advertisement, that, that means it would be about a month from now.
Yeah, because, um, they're not going to vote on it and talk to the public hearings the second meeting in October. So we'll still meet before.
Right. We'll have a workshop.
Yeah, you have a workshop.
And then this would be a hearing. If you vote tonight to advertise, it would be a hearing at your regular meeting.
Should we, should we hold, hold off one month on advertising?
Well, I think from an advertising, from a, from a, so we can, uh, make a couple of changes in this advertising, because what we're talking about is not a major change. Right. And still advertise it, you know, without having to meet again.
I'm just thinking about the cost, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we, if we decide, oh, now we have to redo it.
Well, here, here's something. Maybe for the, uh, the workshop meeting in October, uh, instead of voting to advertise it tonight, I could give you a revised order.
Okay.
That deals with these issues like people already have it. Meanwhile, we look and see how many people that affects. Okay. And then at your workshop meeting, if there's time, we can still advertise it for October or we can put on a number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to do that?
I just want to avoid where we would advertise it, pay for that.
Yeah.
And have to do it again.
Yeah, I said, or we can advertise it and you just don't put the ad in the paper until after the October first meeting. Right? You don't put the, but I think we did it for the fifteenth because you could possibly have, uh, fire safety, fire rented.
Oh.
And you would have this. So you'd have three public hearings on one night. And if you needed a court reporter, that saves the cost.
Right.
Doesn't mean you have to do it that way. That's just, I think that's why it was planned that way. But it doesn't mean it has to be that way at all. Well, I think this, this information is important.
Yeah.
Who has it now?
Right.
That has to be given to you before the October meeting.
Yeah.
So you guys can talk about it.
Uh, those are interesting questions aside from what we have nearby here, aside of, uh, Phillips. Do we know if there's any in our parks?
Good question.
So as we in the, uh.
Jimmy and I will look. There you go, Monday. We're, we're going to be all.
Yeah, I don't.
Plus, you must be a garbage park.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing it, but unless it's buried somewhere in the, you know, in the middle of the woods. And it's not obvious if it is, at least at here. Okay. But, okay. And then we need to, from an advertisement, we need two weeks for this?
No, this one only needs a week.
A week? Okay.
Because it's, it's a general ordinance. The zoning ordinances and things like that need two weeks, a week apart.
Right, right. Okay.
Two, two ads a week.
Okay.
So.
All right. That was a good discussion.
Yeah, that, that was more than I expected.
Makes you think. I'm glad you brought that up. It's not as easy as you think. I'd hire you for definitely.
And a heartbeat. All right. Item E, uh, conditional use application for two nineteen West Broad Street.
So on your agenda is, uh, for consideration, uh, to hold a public hearing in October is a conditional use application of for an oversized garage at two nineteen West Broad Street. Is that your property?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't want to assume, but I said, so the applicant is in attendance this evening. Um, this is just to advertise. So if you have specific questions, I know there will be a public hearing, but if you would like the applicant to come with something for the public hearing, I'm sure he can come up to the podium, talk to you a little bit about what he's proposing and why he's proposing it. And then give him some guidance that he could bring back to the public hearing on the fifteenth of October to, you know, help the process move along if you decide to, you know, continue. So.
Yeah. Did you come up? Cause I actually had a question. I don't know whether you spoke to the zoning officer about this or not. Okay, good. All right. Um, your application submits good plans. I was happy to see that. Oh, your name and address, please.
My name is Kyle with the order drive from the two nineteen West Broad Street.
Okay. Pal, I noticed in your application though, that you said that it was for a business that you have.
Um, I misworded that. I spoke to Bob on the phone yesterday about that. Um, very, very small business, but very private business. I mean, uh, designed and engineer, um, certain parts of motorcycles and race cars. And I just need, um, a little more.
Um, what do you design and engineer motorcycle?
Uh, motorcycle parts and parts for racing.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking, um, and the zoning officer didn't put this on your application and like you probably don't know it. Do you know what zone you're in?
I would agree. That's it all three.
Such commercial.
Okay. Here's what I was worried about. And I do think it was good. You're talking to the zoning officer. Our zoning ordinance has different requirements for home occupations depending on what zone you're in. So you need to discuss those with him and make sure that you can qualify as a home occupation. Then larger than that, there is a state law that actually says you can have a no impact home based business basically anywhere. So it may be that your business to me sounds unusual, you know, and it may be that you don't fall right into the Hatfield Borough ordinance. So you need to ask the zoning officer about whether you qualify as a no impact home based business. That usually means that people don't drive up and buy parts from your garage.
No, they can't like.
Exactly.
I'm not even a wall wall.
Exactly. You don't have a big sign. You don't have five guys working for you, taking orders and running back and getting whatever it is you're making.
No.
All right. You need to have that discussion with the zoning officer because they're going to use the garage for your business as small as it is. It may be not a residential accessory. I'll say that to you guys. Okay. If, if usually a residential accessory garage would include, I don't know, your car, your lawnmower, if you got one, some tools and stuff like that.
Right.
So, so you're not quite a residential business. So if you want to, you want to get approved for your conditional use, you want to get those details straightened out first. And I would apply for the occupant, home occupation permit first.
Okay. Yeah, I spoke to Bob about that yesterday.
Good.
He's, we're, we're working with that.
Okay. Cause I think that's important. And then when you come back, um, the board will sit like judges and you will present your case.
Okay.
And you would say, okay, I understand what's required uh, for an accessory use or why I needed to come here and what I'm going to do with it. And you would show them. And like I said, you wrote a pretty good plan. Sometimes we see hand drawn plans that don't have any dimensions on them.
I, I do all that mostly all day. So.
So yes, okay. Fine.
Thank you.
So then, and then, and then you will explain what you're going to do in there. Also your neighbors will be notified. So they may come in and say, are you going to have cars coming in and out all day? Or I have little kids. I don't want them to get run over, stuff like that, you know? Or how much noise? Do you leave the garage door open when you're working on these things? And you need to be prepared to answer those questions.
Okay.
Sometimes it's a good idea to go talk to your neighbors before they get the notice of the hearing.
I got you. Well, go over here.
Okay. Oh, okay. So you want to, you want to talk to them and make sure they know what you're planning to do and don't have a problem. Okay? All right. Okay. That's, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. And then later this evening, the board will vote to advertise it for October fifteenth.
Okay.
And then, um, and then we'll send out notices and all that. Yeah. But just, I think you ought to have the home occupation part of this done before you come in.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Madam Sussler, do you recommend that, that that's done before we vote on it to advertise it? That he's got that worked out with, with code?
No, cause he's gonna, um, if he doesn't work that out, that would be a problem that might, might prevent him from getting the conditional use.
Right, right. But if we advertise it today and then he's got a problem, aren't we kind of spinning our wheels?
All right. So let's tell you what, what I would suggest in that, um, I assume you want to build this for the end of the building season. You want to build this now? Is that the issue?
Uh, I would like to also.
Right. So we could advertise it. Then the zoning officer is going to have to do a memo and probably should let us all know, you know, that he's qualified as a home occupation for his small business. And so that that's not an issue. And the only issue is how big is this? How many people are coming and going? What's going on with it? You know what I mean? What's it going to look like? That's the other thing. If you have a picture of what it'll look like or something like that, usually your neighbors want to know that, you know?
Absolutely.
And then if, if that's not worked out on the night of the hearing, we can continue the hearing to a date certain without re-advertising.
Okay.
So that would save us the money.
Yep.
Okay. And then, and, and.
Yeah.
But I still think you go talk to the zoning officer, you work it out with him, get, get the home occupation part done.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
All right.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, man. Any questions?
Too quiet.
All right. If not, we'll go to item nine. We have nothing listed under old business. We want to, we don't want to add anything? Or is there anything we need to add old business wise?
I don't, I do not have anything if anybody else does.
I don't have anything. Okay. All right. Then we'll get to the action part of our meeting and we'll start with action item A, motion to consider approving the use of Railroad Plaza Memorial Park for the annual Christmas tree lighting held by Grace Lutheran Church on Saturday, December sixth.
Motion.
I got motion from Councilman Burns, second from Councilwoman Weiss. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item B, motion to consider advertising for ordinance number five, five, nine amending chapter five code of ordinance for residential and non-residential property inspection programs for a public hearing to be held October fifteenth, twenty twenty five at seven P M.
Second.
I can motion. Sorry.
Finished. I think we should be asking if anybody, I mean, we have more people than usual in the public.
Okay.
So, so I think the motion's fine, but don't forget to ask if there's any public comment on this action item before each vote. That's a good idea.
Okay. All right. Um, so we will go back to the previous, um, uh, motion for the advertising for the Christmas tree lighting. Were there any questions from the public on that? All right. Uh, how about the motion to advertise for the ordinance for the residential, non-residential property inspection? Any question? From the public? All right. If not, can I get a motion? I can motion from Councilman Fagan, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Are there any questions from the public on our motion to consider for the advertisement of ordinance five, six, zero amending the chapter ten code of ordinances um, for weeds and other vegetations to regulate bamboo for public hearing to be held on October fifteenth, twenty twenty five at seven P M.
Do you want to wait to see my, I'm sorry. Do you want to wait to see my revised ordinance for the workshop meeting?
Okay.
So let's just table.
Sorry.
List right one. Now I think would be the right way to do that. And then that make sure we have it as an action item on the workshop, because usually we don't do action items.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
That's.
Thank you for that reminder. Table. All right. We'll go to item D, motion to consider advertising the, a conditional use hearing for two nineteen West Broad Street for a public hearing to be held October fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty five at seven P M.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Burns, second from Councilman Weiss. Any questions from the public on this? All right. If not, all in favor? Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Can we see the bills? We'll ask up front if we have any questions on the bills. All right. Hearing no questions. Can I get motion to approve payment of the bills?
I'll move.
Second.
I can motion from Councilman Gerard, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. We will be having an executive session to discuss real estate, uh, legislation and personnel issues. So can I get a motion to adjourn? I can motion from Councilwoman Weiss, second from Councilman Gerard. All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? There are none. We are adjourned. Thank you.